Yeah, folks, I have seven o'clock and a quorum of the board. Three of us have our cameras on. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. Town Clerk Hootson, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes, President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert. Mr. Duckett.
Here.
Commissioner Handchuk.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Here.
Town Administrator Carl Snyder.
Here.
Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Present.
Town Clerk John Hootson.
Thank you. We'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move into a review of the agenda. Clerk Hootson, can you take us through that?
Well, do. Number one, call to order. Two, roll call. Three, pledge of allegiance. Four, review of agenda. Five, consent agenda, consisting of A, meeting minute, B, public safety report, C, public works report, D, financial report, and E, administrative report. Number six, reports. Arts Council Committee Report, Cert Committee Report, Events Committee Report, Green Team Committee Report, Greenwell Consulting Committee Report, Historical Committee Report, Sustainable Communities Committee Report, and Commissioner Reports. Number seven, business. A comment will be taken prior to the business line items, three minutes per item. They consist of A, Resolution 2022, excuse me, 2023-01 Budget Calendar Board Vote. B, Resolution 2023-02 Town Branding Contract Adjustment Board Vote. C, Events Calendar Board Vote. D, Conference Room Agreement Board Vote. E, Dumpster Agreements Board Vote. And F, Proposed Elections Ordinance Board Discussion. Eight, Administrative Updates. Nine, Public Comment for Items Not Necessarily on the Immediate Agenda. Ten, Preliminary Approval of Next Meeting Agenda. And eleven is a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you. Are there any changes, additions to the, oh, I think, oh, no, we have a quorum, sorry. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
John, would you call or vote? Thank you.
I'll do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
Mr. Duckett.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Lot.
Aye.
Sorry, I think Commissioner Lot ordered. Thank you.
I didn't hear my name.
That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We will move on now to reports. I believe the Arts Committee is, did, is meeting again in February, so there's probably not a report. Is that correct, Commissioner Duckett? Chief Burst, do you want to give us a cert update?
Yes, for the month of December, the cert had a total of eighty-seven hours of community service meetings and other activities, and that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lot, Events Committee?
I met with the new events coordinator, and we just went over some, went over the schedules for the new town events for 2023 and worked out some details. So more information will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Handchuk, Green Team?
Good evening, everyone. Green Team met last week. We discussed what seeds and we, well, not myself, but most of them have organized the garden into what they want to do, where stuff wants to get planted in their timeframe. There was discussion for the farmer's market and doing the date, so we're working with Lisa on timeframes and working that in. Also, we are meeting tomorrow, and that is to figure out the seed that we have and figure out what we need to get. So if anyone wants to donate any seed, we will gladly accept and appreciate. Thank you very much.
Kyle, do you want to tag Team Greenwell? Because I talked to them today, but you may have some stuff from them, too. So Greenwell is in Annapolis, you know, meeting with legislators, check keeping an eye on legislation that might impact the town and has asked me to testify on things that might impact the town. Right now, that includes a bill for reentry services for funding coming to Prince George's County. Now, that's not directly to the town, but getting folks reentry from the jail rather than walking downtown from the jail is a help to us. And the other one that we're discussing is the single payer, which we can, you guys can give me your opinions on when we get there, but I know we have a lot of entrepreneurs in town based on all these vendor events, so I thought that might be something that assists them. Kyle, do you have anything from them?
Nothing more concrete than that. When they're just kind of pushing through, it's the first two weeks of session, so everything is still fluid.
Okay. All right. Moving on to Historical Committee, just to let everyone know, I've reached out to some volunteers or some people who wanted to volunteer on the historic committee to see if, to try and bring interest so we can get a committee backup. So we'll see how that goes. Sustainable Communities, Commissioner Colbert, do you want to take that?
There's no new update at this time.
All right, we'll move on to Commissioner Reports. All right, so it's been a exciting month with lots of things happening. So early on in the end of December and in the last week, I've been working with WSSC to elevate our concerns on Spring Branch Road and make sure that the water line was repaired quickly and the repaving happened quickly. I have held a bunch of annexation discussions to try to get our annexation moving forward. We have a, have had a portion of our staff with COVID more than usual, but due to HIPAA and public safety concerns, I can't get more involved in that. We held our first blended meeting. However, there were some issues with the recording, the ability to hear people, see their faces. So at the February work session, we're going to try a new tact to that, and Town Administrator Snyder will talk to us about that in, at the end of the meeting. Sorry, I'm just making sure I still have a quorum. I attended Ayesha Braveboy's investiture attorney, investiture ceremony for her second term as State's Attorney. I attended Brooklyner Man swearing in and celebration. I had some good conversations with her on our entertainment tax, so that's really positive. Attended the Moore Miller inauguration and People's Ball. At the opening day reception for the legislature, and I was able to have a conversation with someone about some of the reasons why we're having so much trouble getting our homeless resident into the help that he needs. And I also was able to reach out to a CCI, which is the county's crisis team to try and really work on getting that resolved, but it is not easy, turns out, but we are working on it. Also been working with SHA about the pedestrian striping area, which we spoke about, I think, at the work session. And when that can get done, it's cold, so that's a factor, but they are responding on that. Um, I think that's all on my list, and we'll move on to Commissioner Colbert.
I don't have much of an update this month. I also attended Governor Moore's inauguration and the People's Ball a little bit over a week ago and was able to attend some of the other inauguration or elected officials swearing in virtually. That's about it for me at this time.
Commissioner Duckett, sorry.
Yes, good evening, everyone. For my report, I just wanted to just, I'm working on like my some 2023 goals, and part of that 2023 goal, I'd like to just look at like an overview of like maybe putting together a survey like of employees, like so that employees can take like a yearly or, you know, by, well, yearly survey so that they can survey their jobs, kind of like their morale, what they like about their jobs, all those things. So like an employee survey. So I'm kind of working on what that can look like as well as like performance review so that we're doing those on a timely basis so that employees know where they are. And then it also helps them to plan for the rest of the year themselves and so that we can also see, you know, what their goals are and how we can better assist them throughout the year. So I'm trying to, I'm in the process of putting that together and kind of will share with you as that comes into full fruition. But see something like that as part of my goal to, to help ascertain like how we operate at the town and with employees.
Okay. I just want to let you know that we have a performance review, and we are, performance reviews are usually done in February, but we should, if you want to add a survey to that, we should try and get that together because we usually will. So we're, we're trying to do our performance reviews in February, so we're ready for our March closed session. So I'm just going to add that feedback.
And that survey, so that survey is something that I want to.
Right, they should be at the same time.
And, and performance reviews, just I know that you say, and I know that when we added those performance reviews, however, I just want to make sure that when we are doing performance reviews, I want to make sure that we are also including like quarterly goals. So this will also help to create some accountability for, for what we are doing as employees in serving the town. So that's what I'm saying.
So I just want to make sure, what I'm hearing is that the board would like to review the performance review at forms and survey this year. So we'll add that.
Yes.
So we'll have to do that at the work session so that we can get our reviews done in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to Commissioner Handchuk.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start off by thanking Public Works in their response to the issue on my property on rectory. Not that it mattered, the street was closed, but they dealt with it as fast as they could according to, you know, the power company. So thank you guys very much. Well appreciated by everyone on the street. Also, I attended the Moore and Miller inauguration, and I also attended the ball at the event in the evening in Baltimore. I ran into some people and you know, some legislators and stuff like that. So it was nice that they got to see that Upper Marlboro was represented. And that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lot?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just want to say that I did also attend the inauguration and the ball in in Baltimore. We had a good time. It was nice to see new faces and meet people. And that's all I have for this week. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to business. Just a reminder to the public, public comment can be ta, will be taken during business. Just for technical, the easiest thing for you to do is while we're talking about the topic, to stick your hand up. That way we know you have a question or a comment for the end. So we will go into topic number one, which is Resolution 2023-01 Budget Calendar. Administrator Snyder, you want to give us that overview?
Coming on camera now. Thank you, Mayor. So the board discussed it at the work session. So now this is just a formal resolution approving it so we can get it out to the public. So everyone can kind of follow along with the budget discussion to make sure they know when input's being taken and whatnot. So nothing's changed. Except we assigned a date for the extra budget work session for February, Tuesday, February 21st. And just for the public who weren't at the work session, one of the big changes from last year's schedule is the board's looking to approve the budget at the May town meeting versus trying to have a special town meeting in early June. So I just wanted to highlight those two items. If I can take any questions. Um, no questions, Kyle, but I just had a couple of, you know, kind of nitpicky amendments that I pulled out. So I didn't see the, and we may not be discussing budget items there, but the February town meeting on the 28th is enlisted here. And then the March town meeting is listed as the 21st, but I believe that should also be March 28th. Twenty, okay. The February is not listed because there were no budget items for February town meetings, so that's fine, but we can make that update.
I would like to interject about the February 14th work session. Is there a way that we can move that date, or do we have to have that firm date? Since it is Valentine's Day. I know it's not holiday, but some people may not be available, so.
It's the second Tuesday, which is when we usually have our work sessions.
I know. I'm saying it's the 14th as well. So I'm just asking if there's possibility, or is there anyone, is everyone fine with that date?
I would actually be in agreement with moving it if we, if we had that opportunity.
My stuff is celebrating on the weekend, so two days not going to bother me, but that's going to be up to you guys.
When would we have this meeting if we don't have it on the 14th?
Could we?
Can we do it on the 15th? Can we just move it a day?
I don't think so.
I have to check my schedule.
I'm pretty sure I have meetings every other night that week.
What if, oh, well.
Or can we move the meeting to an earlier time?
Or would it be possible to, to move it, to pull it up a week to the previous Tuesday?
So the problem with moving it up to the previous Tuesday is that you guys won't have the information until, like, so we're basically bumping it up, just so you know what the current list of topics is, is going to be budget priorities, board performance, of the board review of performance evaluation forms and survey, Better City Vision Plan, Sustainable Communities Working Group, Police Office Space Ethics and Elections. And then there's a proposed closed session that we'll vote on later.
Can I just add something?
Yeah.
School don't close on Valentine's Day and workplaces don't close on Valentine's Day. I mean, if if we can't work around that, I mean.
I've got an idea. Sorry, Kyle, this extra work session on the 21st, we're planning to only talk about anticipated revenue and town tax rates, and that was going to be it. So that would be like an hour?
Yeah.
So what if we I'd say we could do one of two things. We can agree to have a really long meeting on the 21st, right, and skip the meeting on the 14th. Or we can agree to have a super short meeting on the 14th. Like even if everyone's okay to bump it up a little earlier, we can even do that and just only talk about priorities. That will still make the 21st like a little bit longer, but it might alleviate some of it. I don't know. What does everyone think?
I'll leave it up to you guys. I'm good with whatever. We're celebrating the weekend before.
The rest. Kind of good. For me, I'm, I'm fine with 14th where it is. I'm, I mean, but if you guys need to change it, I'm flexible.
I am also fine with where it is. So I mean, that is three of us, but like I'm trying to be compromised, so.
Well, can we shorten the meeting on the 14th then? I mean, if we have to have it on the 14th, I mean, you know, can we shorten it a little bit?
Um, so what if Ky, Kyle, correct me if, and John, if I'm doing something that I can't do. What if this list of agenda topics that we were going to discuss on the 14th at the end of the meeting, when we talk about it, we'll split it so that it's between the 14th and the 21st. So we'll have the two meetings, but the 14th will be shorter. Is that something we're permitted to do?
You can do that. That's not a problem.
Yeah.
You just have to advertise it correctly, which we will.
Okay. Does that alleviate the concerns? Is that a good compromise? So shortening the four, the meeting on the 14th, but not, not putting everything on the 21st? And we'll work it out at the end of this meeting?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, with, you know, keeping a shorter meeting.
Okay.
A second thought.
Is there a feeling about moving it up earlier? Can, and can everyone attend if we move it to six o'clock instead of seven? Because I know people are coming from DC.
I just can't do before four.
Commissioner Duckett, you're coming from DC.
Yeah, I can't do earlier, but I cannot do earlier, but I would prefer to keep it. It's at seven. Yeah, I mean, the earliest I could do probably be like 6:30. So if you want to like to make sure I'm available and, and, you know, no 30 makes a difference for anyone, but.
All right. Well, there's not an advertised time on it, so we'll keep that in mind when we come back to the agenda setting at the end of the meeting. Okay. All right. Anything else on the calendar? Because I know that all got complicated for a second there.
We saw the one amendment for the March 28th and so the 21st.
Okay. And that's just both of us knowing they're the same days of the week and not catching it. All right. So is there a motion to approve the?
I have to read the record. Hold on.
You're right. And we have to take public comment, but there isn't any right now. Okay, thank you, John.
You're welcome. Resolution 2023-01 Session Regular Town Meeting dated January 24, 2023. A resolution setting the proposed budget calendar for the fiscal year 2024 budget.
And I don't see any hands, but I will ask, is there any public comment? All right. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-01?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
You want to call the vote, John?
Yep, President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Handchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And we'll move on to Resolution 2023-02 Town Branding Contract Adjustment. And I will let Administrator Snyder take this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is also discussed at the work session last month, or earlier this month, I'm sorry. So it's for Better City, the current town economic development firm, since I've been doing a lot of discussions and had a lot of outreach to residents and whatnot, and they do offer branding services. One of the things was to kind of bring them on board with that. So there's the proposal in there, which the commissioner saw the pricing, so it's just a formal proposal, the 7,500, those two or three items that they would do, and also an in-depth kind of discussion on their process of developing the brand, which I know the commissioners were interested in as well.
Are there any questions, comments, discussion? Public, if you have a comment, just raise your hand. All right. Hearing no comments, questions, or discussions, is there a motion to approve Resolution 20? You didn't read it into the record. I keep skipping that tonight. Thank you, John.
Resolution 2023-03 Session Regular Town Meeting dated January 24, 2023. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve the acceptance of a branding and logo quote from Better City USA.
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, John.
Okay. President Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Handchuk.
Aye. I'm sorry.
Mr. Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we will move on to the town events calendar. Administrator Snyder?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the same list of events that the board saw earlier in the month. There is one addition, and that is the Glorin Green with Pride Cleanup Event on Saturday, the 22nd of April. That's a partnership with Prince George's County. They have a countywide cleanup in the towns participate in the past. We wanted to include it because it may include some public work staff time, and it's the set, it just, it's good for both a set cleanup day and the county, since it's a county event, they provide a lot of trash bags and gloves and support on that.
And landscaping sometimes.
Landscaping, mulch and stuff. So it's, it's a good partnership. So that was the only addition. We have all the events. There's rain dates on the kind of the core dates, the Tree Lighting Christmas Town, Tree of Tree on Main Street, and Marlboro Day have their designated rain dates. Everything else is kind of hit or miss if we're going to have it or not. And this does not include any additional stuff, like when the Arts Council meets, any Green Team stuff and blood drives. Of course, any other committees add events, they'll have to kind of come through the board, so the board's aware, which is setting core events for the year.
Is there, are there any comments, questions?
Oh, yeah, questions. So Kyle, the only thing I don't see on here is the Arts Council.
All right.
Arts, happy.
Yeah, they, because they haven't provided a date yet. So hopefully when they need February, they can bring a date.
Do we still need a date, or do we just, can we just put date, put it on there, but do we need a hard date right now?
Oh, it'd be nice. We can always add it later, because we don't really advertise this calendar in particular.
Okay.
That's before us. So it's just kind of establishing, but hopefully at their February meeting, they can give one, and John, I'll just incorporate it to the, whatever we publish.
Okay.
So the only thing with the dates, I just want to like kind of clarify, like, basically, if we just add dates later, the dates may be all tight together. They may overlap with rain dates, or it may be a situation where, you know, town staff is working four weekends in a row. So that's why we want to have the dates ahead of time. So I guess when they're picking their date, kind of guide them to space it out a little bit. If that's, that's good.
Yeah, and this date, our date is primarily in September, if I remember correctly. So I don't see anything for September, so we should be good. But we'll have something on the calendar soon.
Is there a motion to approve this event's calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Aye.
Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
Mr. Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Handchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I, I did not actually make a call for public comment, but no hands were raised, so I am going to just make sure no one wanted to comment. We can go back if it was necessary. Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to the conference room agreement. This, if you recall, after the last time, there were some changes requested. It was sent out right away with those changes, and Administrator Snyder Right away with those changes, um, and Administrator Snyder can kind of go over that and those changes and hopefully we can clear it.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so yeah, we kind of made, uh, the changes of the board discussed about the alcohol and drugs, um. Who, uh. Like the time administrator on behalf of the board of commissioners, um, can make those types of agreements. So this was as I'm on my highlight and changes, and then we, on the back page, we, uh. Discussed, um, with the, like, the, the key big issue down being returned. Um, and then also brought it, we narrowed down the event, private event, um, for in-town residents and private events for. Out of town residents and also, um, provided one hour setup time, one hour cleanup time for charge as the board discussed. And the town attorney reviewed it for legal sufficiency as well.
Are there any comments, questions, concerns? Everyone's good with the changes. This doesn't have a resolution, so you don't need to read it in, right, John?
That is correct. I don't have to.
I do not see any resident hands raised. Um, so is there a motion?
I have one quick question. Um, Kyle, with the, um, with the agreement in, in, on number six. Um, a certificate of insurance showing liability coverage. So are we providing? Uh, a site, because a lot of people don't know what that is, a COI. So are we providing, um. The information to make it easier for them? Is it going to be attached to the, um, form that they're going to fill out? And along with the fee, because it, it would be a separate fee for that?
That'd be a case by case. So as I review stuff, um, because it says in there may be required. So before it gets approved. Um, I see why we can walk them through how to add the town to their insurance policy or whatnot.
I just ordered checks. What'd you say?
If that, is that answer?
Well, I guess, well, I guess, well, yeah, kind of, because everyone wouldn't have to have a, a certificate of insurance. It depends on what they were actually doing. So, yes, thank you.
Yeah, case by case. No problem. Of course. Great question.
Okay. Technically, uh, let me just ask this one question. Um, most people that are holding a private event. Do not carry, uh, liability insurance, of course, because they're just, these are just one-offs. I feel personally that every person that's holding an event should have a COI. Um, and also we may want to look into. I know there's an option where you can find a, an insurance company that will provide. That liability insurance for them at a cost. So it's not like we're taking on, assuming that. Role, but we can actually pull in a company that will just say, yes, you can. Use our insurance, you know, you could offer our insurance to make it very easy for the, uh, for the, um. For the individual to do business with you and they just complete the form. Probably pay no more than a hundred dollars for the insurance and then it covers any damage. So I personally think. That for liability sake, we don't even know, person can still smoke somewhere or do anything or mess up the floors or whatever. They, we still need insurance, I think, for every event. I don't care if it's a baby shower. Um, because we don't know how, you know, things happen. Glue hits the floor, all type, we don't know, we don't know. So we would be responsible for that if we don't have it covered somehow. But we don't have to make it hard for individuals to do business. We can actually look into that insurance company that can provide that. And we may already be able to, um, speak with our insurance carrier and ask them, do they have like an events insurance? Um, coverage that we can offer to patrons, to individuals that would like to enter our space. So Kyle, if you can't do that, if you would like me to look into it and, um, provide our information, I'd be happy to. Uh, check that out for you, uh, you know, for everyone and get that information back to you. Just let me know.
Um, I just want to, what is it? What is the feeling of the board? Like, does everyone think that we should have insured? Be requiring insurance for every event?
Only event with alcohol.
I just want to get a sense of, of where we're going with, because if we're gonna. Change this again, then we should be tabling it. Um, so I want to know, uh, do we, are we going to vote on this?
Sorry.
Sorry.
I would think the town insurance would cover it if there wasn't alcohol involved, but if they want alcohol, they have to cover themselves, right?
We're not accepting alcohol on the premises at all. No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought someone just said that.
No, no, no. Hold on. Four is no hard alcohol or illicit drugs. We all agreed on that.
Gotcha. My bad. Sorry. I missed, I missed her, Joe.
Sorry. Beer and wine are allowed. That was part of the decision. So, so yes, you need insurance if you have beer and wine. The question is. So Commissioner Lot and Commissioner Colbert, if you can kind of give your opinion on whether we should be. Requiring insurance for any events or just ones where, um, beer and whiner.
Well, I'm, I'm on the fence with that, only because I do know. That accidents happen and for me and my everyday business, we have to have. A COI for anyone coming on the property to do anything. If whether it's a repair to, um. To have any event, we have to have it because if anything happens, the ownership doesn't want to, uh, assume the liability. They want the insurance to pay for it. And yes, we offer. If it's for an event, we have a, a different way. I think Kyle, you mentioned something about someone can use their homeowner's insurance. I, I don't know about that. Um, I know that you can buy insurance for. Just for that particular event. I've never heard of anybody using their homeowner's insurance to cover an event.
So I'm just going to call for Commissioner Colbert's two cents on the matter and then we'll kind of make a decision if we're voting or tabling.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, there's different levels of insurance that might be needed, but I think if we're any type of event, there's some level of liability that. Comes along with it. So we may not require the same amount of insurance, but probably something.
Okay.
Could be in place.
I'm going to ask if there's a motion to table this item until the February, one of the two February work sessions.
Come here, Sasha. Yes, I, um, motion that we, um. Table item. Conference room agreement until the next, uh, boardroom, board session, work session.
Um, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any public comment before we vote? All right. Go ahead, John.
President Franklin.
Hi.
Mr. Colbert.
Hi.
Mr. Duckett.
Hi.
Mr. Henshaw.
Hi.
Mr. Lot.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That we'll move on to the dumpster agreements. Go ahead, Administrator Snyder. Is that you or is that chief, actually?
It could be either or, I guess.
I think it's chief's because he's got code under him. Sorry. Sorry, chief.
Okay, um.
Or if you want Kyle to do it, he can do it.
Dumpster, I mean, I, I guess I wouldn't prepare for this. The dumpster, I can't even read it, it's, uh.
Here, you want to have Kyle kind of just, because it's an, I think, I'm just going to say, like, it's. There, there's a bunch of them, right? All at once?
Right. I think it's like four or five different, um, dumpster agreements. The individuals at different properties downtown has. Uh, submitted their applications, uh, the board approves them. Then we can give them the actual permit. They can keep it there for the scheduled date and time. As you see on this one here, it's, it's from January first to. Uh, March thirtieth of this year, um. So if the board approves each individual one, we'll just assign them to the individual property and they'll be good to go from there.
And there's the two of them. Can you tell us where the two are? One is Elm, right?
It looks like.
Elm Street and.
Yeah, it should be.
Does anyone know where this other one is? Is it the one across from Elm Street?
It's one of them. Elm Street, Old Marlboro Pike. I think it's two or three on Old Marlboro Pike, one on one side of the street and two on the other side of the street. And then Elm Street.
Okay. This is only two of them. Is that correct, guys? Kyle and Chief? Okay.
Yeah, it's all as in the packet.
Yeah.
I have a question. Is there a charge, um, for these dumpsters? Or do we charge for the permitting process?
I can answer that.
Administrative process of that.
Because Kyle's going to take that.
Yeah, so this was, uh, that's a good question, because this is, I don't think this board has touched these yet, um. So that, uh, as process was set, going to spec in, I won't say twenty seventeen. Um, about dumpsters, they didn't want to put too much, uh, red tape up. So what they decided was, uh. Dumpsters, if they're going to be let dumpsters or roll off containers, so pods or storage permits. Can sit on our private property for up to fifteen days. If it's over fifteen days, you need a permit at that point. So just to kind of lessen the. Legwork of the town of approving all these dumpsters. Now, if it's placed on the street or right away, they needed, they need it right away before they place it. Um, and there is no fee. Um, other places charge a fee and require a permit before it's placed. If that's something the board wants to do. Yeah, that's just the way it is. I can send out the ordinance too, if the board is interested.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in knowing, um, how could the town benefit from, you know, having this? If the dumpsters are there from, um, more than the fifteen days and we're issuing them a permit. At that point, I think we should charge a fee. I mean, that's just my take on that. And it's bringing some way to bring revenue into the town. Fifteen days, if you don't, you know. If it's on private property, I agree with that. But after that point, if you actually have to present them with a permit, I think that they should be paying an administrative fee. At the least.
So, um, guys, is this the property standards ordinance?
I think it's the construction permitting. I'll send it out and tell you guys the section to read.
Um, so, so the property standards and what, let's put the construction permitting together. Those are ordinances we've been trying to get to, um. But we have a pretty full agenda, so we'll have to figure out how to, uh. Get them added to the agenda, but, you know, the request has been not to overload it, so. Yeah, we're going to have to work that out. So we'll have a bigger, we'll have a bigger agenda discussion at the end of this. So that's where I'm going to move that, um. For the agreements that are here, though, are there any questions? Comments, concerns? And these are both. So the one. I guess. The one on Elm Street. Is not a dumpster. It's a storage unit. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, is there a motion to approve?
You have public comment.
Oh, you're right. Sorry. Thank you, John. Um, can you unmute?
I will do.
Oh, sorry. I, I was going to ask where this actually was, but that got answered.
Okay. Is, is there a motion to approve these two dumpster agreements?
So moved.
Is there a second?
President Franklin.
Hi.
Mr. Colbert.
Hi.
Mr. Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Henshaw.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We will move on to the proposed elections ordinance. We discussed this at the work session. We decided to put it on this agenda so that the public has more opportunities to comment on it. Um, I will first ask the commissioners if they had anything in further review of it. To add, and then we'll move right on to public comment on it. All right. Hearing nothing from the commissioners, we will take our first public comment.
Uh, hi, Joe Urquhart, old Marlboro Pike. I don't know if I can get all this done in three minutes, so I'll speak fast. Um, first question is, as the supervisors also act as an election judge, do they get paid three fifty? Plus two, plus the fraction of two fifty for the day? Or do they just get paid three fifty or a fraction of three fifty if they only work part of the day? Um, because that doesn't really consider that there are normally organizational meetings and other setup stuff that the supervisors of elections have done in the past. Um. On section six D, the town clerk shall notice the filing deadline. I assume that should file notice. Um, on section six F, uh, the town clerk shall ensure the ballots for write-in candidates. Does that mean that the town clerk is now, uh, responsible for getting the ballots created? Um. It also says in seven, the town clerk is now the one who prepares absentee ballots and the absentee voter list. Um, which has been done in the past, but there is the issue in seven A that, that says that the town clerk scratch it. You know, crosses the person's name off of the voter registration list, um, which had been managed by the Board of Supervisors Elections in the past. Um, D of that section, a member of the Board of Supervisors shall go to the Board of Supervisors of Elections post office box at the closing of the polls. If any ballots are contacted within, I assume contacted is a mistake, uh, that's also going to significantly slow down the counting of the ballots. Um, as that, you know, there will be that pause before we can actually begin counting. Uh. Section eight A says election day, preparing of the polling station. A lot of that setup gets done ahead of time. Um, but to maintain this list, uh, A five. Uh, ends with the town clerk, she'll keep the ballot box key in secure location, insecure stored until the polls close. That's a problem because there needs to be a review by the supervisors that the, uh, ballot box are empty before they are secured. So that has to be done on the day of. Um, it says here, there, there's also, um, in eight B. Uh, the election chair shall be responsible for provisional voting and assure that residents who are not on the voter registration, et cetera. Um, the town has not had provisional voting in the past. Um, and I don't know. How that is going to be done, um, within the timeframe, because the elections are now on a Tuesday. You will have Wednesday and until noon on Thursday to try and get everything cured. Um. Uh, the town clerk shall announce the closing of the polls five minutes before seven PM, um. I, I, I'm working from memory here. I thought the polls closed at eight, not seven. Um. In section C of that, number six, when all regular ballots are tallied, the election chair shall open the sealed envelopes. With absentee ballots and count them. Um, that's also going to slow down the process in the past. Because if there is the process of confirming signatures and stuff like that, that's normally happened about an hour before the end of the election. Um, and in, if we have to go to the completely restricted thing again, we've had as many, we've had over twenty. Um. Absentee ballots that had to then be processed, which takes a rather long time.
Um, so I, I know you have more valuable thing, insights to add from your time on the board. Is it possible for you to put them in an email because we're past our three minutes?
It's going to take me a while, I.
Okay. Well, how about this? We, this is our first of many readings of it. Um, so. Let's, we'll, we'll look at the changes you've suggested and then, um. In our next meeting, when we talk about it, we can look at other concerns.
All right.
Alright.
I don't see any additional public comment. We don't need to do anything with that, because it was a discussion. Which is gonna move us on to administrative updates. And I'm gonna turn that over to Administrator Snyder. I think that's mainly blended meeting discussion. But I don't know if you have anything else.
Uh, no, I'll tag team with the clerk oats and we had our first test blended meeting. I think we're gonna do some tweaks and try it at the February town meeting. Or February work session. Whenever that's gonna be, you know, you guys can discuss that here in a little bit. And take those changes and hopefully have a. In February is the goal. Is that right, John? There's just some small tweaks we had to make, looking at the recording video after that, make sure we capture the online audience and then also. Bringing those people who want to stay, uh, who want to come in person and participate as well.
Sorry, go ahead.
I just said, we're working on some quality issues with the video.
Yeah.
Reason why there was a delay for this month. So the plan is we'll be working, Kyle and I are working together to address the problems and have them corrected for the next one.
Um, just so everyone's kind of aware, what I'm directing staff is that we will test. Guys. Sorry. We will test the blended at work sessions, but if it doesn't work. The regular meeting will be virtual until we can be sure that if residents come to a blended regular meeting, that they are getting the whole meeting. They don't want people to show up and not be getting their meeting when we are voting. So, but we have two work sessions in February, so. Hopefully we can test the, at the first one, and if it works, then great. And if not, we'll have that second one to also test it.
I have a question. How come we just don't open town hall back since the, the governor has opened up? They opened their back in office at, at the county and county level. How come we don't open town hall back? So the people who are not able to. Or who have technical challenges can still participate. Some people really just like to get out and come, come to the meetings. And we don't know, I know before that you mentioned that it wasn't that many people that was coming out. But who knows, you know, it's been three years since we've been closed, so we don't know what that, what that looks like at this point.
So. For start, I just want to clarify, the town hall is open. We're talking about the meeting itself, whether it's.
That's what I'm talking about, open to meetings. Let me clarify, sorry. Open to meetings.
So. While we, while people want to come back in, we also don't want to lose people who might attend on Zoom. And the feedback I've gotten from the commissioners is that there, there's not an ability for everyone to be there consistently. So. That is why we have not gone back to full in person.
Also, isn't the definition of blended, meaning some people can be there, so if residents are there, they'll be there with them?
Right, but she also stated that until we fix that. We have to test it, and until we fix it, that it will still remain.
Well, I mean, yes, we are.
So that's where I am changing. I mean, that's where I'm going with that, like, since we still have to test it, see if it worked. And if it doesn't work, we're still gonna be stuck at the same point. We're not gonna be making any progress, really.
So, I guess. That it's this. Push-pull of who's there, who isn't. And so the other thing we've done is we tried to collect data to find out, there's this kind of sense that we're getting that maybe residents want to come in person, but we don't know, right? And so we asked, if, if you look at. The, if you look at the agenda, it says, contact town hall to see if blended meetings are in effect. We put that on there so that we can collect data about who is interested in coming to blended meetings. From attending previous public meetings, and yes, there's new people and they may be interested in coming in person and not interested in attending on Zoom. But there is, there's only one or two people who are still town residents. Who would previously attend in person that I don't see on these. That does not mean that I don't want them to have this opportunity, and that's why we're working on a sort of different blended meeting. Style, my under. Do you guys have that, that style we've talked about? Is that gonna be what we test, or you have a different plan? I don't want to put you on the spot. You can just say, no, that's not gonna work. We have to come up, we have a different plan.
I was under the impression that if, as long as we're all in the meeting, if one or two people are at town hall. That gives citizens access. So just because we all can't make it, doesn't mean. That town hall's closed, like.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't say like, but in other words, if there's somebody in town hall, citizens can come. So that's, I, I think that's enough for me, because I, like I was telling Kyle earlier, I hear so much better listening to you guys. Here in my own home with a carpeted room. Versus the, the conference room there, it's echoes. I can't hear there. So let's say we could get two people from home, three people in the office, or vice versa. As long as it's open for citizens to be there, I think it works.
I would agree with Commissioner Hatchett. And while I know that, I, I think that if we could. If we, as commissioners, can say, yes, I'll be there at least. As he suggested, we have at least two or three that can be there in person. And of course, that rotates, it's not, maybe not always the same people, but you know, we're there in person. I think it just gives the, the residents an opportunity to have more community and feel like they can be heard. I mean, trying to do this all the time, for some people via, you know, virtual, it's just not. You know, the best way for them to be able to communicate. I think most people would feel better if they know, know, knew that they had opportunity to come and hear and stand up and speak and, you know, see, and I think just people have better communication that way. But also, when we think about how many people, and I think I heard about, like, some people aren't coming and you know, we don't have that much interest. Well, quite honestly, over the last past eighteen years. Historically, there only been a handful of people that actually come to these meetings. So as, so we can't use like this data to think, or just to say, well, it's only like a few people that show up and people are not really coming. It doesn't matter. The point is, is that we give the people, the residents, the access to be. We should not just try to quantify it and say, well, only because two people are showing up, then that's why. We should have it available.
I'm not saying I put a microphone in the room and just say, here, go for it. As long as we have maybe a commissioner or two in the room. It'll let residents that wanna be there involved, you know, I mean, that can't necessarily join online. That's all, thank you.
Yeah, I want to just kind of clarify the issue a little, and Kyle, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong here. But the issue is to, to get all five of us physically in a room and have the audio quality. That is necessary for Zoom interaction is a cost of about a hundred thousand dollars. So, it becomes this. Yes, we want those two people to be able to participate, but we have to find a way for them to be able to participate without spending a hundred thousand dollars on blended meeting software. And, and Kyle, I know that you and John and I had a discussion, like, right after the meeting and said, maybe this will work. Now, I don't want to put you on the spot, so if you think that solution has issues. Go ahead and say that has issues and we have to work them out. But if you think that solution will work, maybe present it to the commissioners.
I think it's pretty close. I think, you know, we just have to do the tweaks. I know we ran a couple of things through. We're looking at getting some sound absorbing. Panels for the back wall for people to talk into, so we ordered those already, just to kind of line the top. Also. I remember, we ran through a lot of scenarios. If John could help me out here.
We were talking about the watch party scenario.
For the worst case, we have the watch, that's right, the what, we were talking about doing that for work sessions as well. But kind of having it on the screen, even if the board wants to keep our work sessions virtual, we do a watch party at town hall where it's played live. In the, the conference room and people can sit and watch it, and maybe there's commissioner two there. And then they come out afterwards, but doing kind of that for the town meetings. If it truly doesn't work, the commissioners are kind of in different rooms, the public's there. So that way our one microphone will pick up just the public and public comment. And we'll be able to see and focus in on them, and then obviously afterwards, everyone's there. But there's just a couple of different solutions that we're working through. I think the sound absorbers and just making sure people announce their names and stuff like that when the recordings going through with Zoom. Cause the other big thing is ever since the minutes, we've shifted to all virtual minutes. That's the big thing is to make sure the audio quality's high enough for a later review of the minutes. John, did I miss anything?
No, that's it. I mean, I think what's good, you can just set up a microphone. After the watch party to do public comment, where people can make public comment and have a chance to be heard.
So, kind of for conceptually, like, last time Kyle, Karen and I were in the conference room. But the, that didn't really work with speaking into the microphone and like, of course, the angle and being able to see us speaking was poor. So, the idea is to swap that, right? So put the public in that room, set them up with a microphone. We can still be on site. There are, it's iffy if all five of us are there, but there are spaces that we can all separate into and be here virtually in this box while also physically at town hall. So that afterwards, if, if it's that kind of, I want to shake your hand and say goodnight to you connection that people are looking for, then they can still have that. But then they don't have to deal with, if they have technical issues at home, they can come and, and interact through the town hall without the technical difficulties.
Yeah, I just think if Kyle's talking about the sound tiles or whatever, that'll help a lot. And I know it's an issue for me. I don't know how it's an issue for other people, but I remember that last meeting, a couple of people were having trouble. Hearing one specific person based on where the microphone was, so, I mean. Is it a hundred thousand dollar expense right now? No, I think we can work around that. By big, just having a couple of people there and directing residents to microphone and. You know, if we had to rotate, we could, but I, I think the sound tiles will help a lot. Thank you.
Um, this commissioner, I wanted to add that, I, I don't think that us actually, I mean, thank you for thinking outside of the box, and that's what I think that is, but I, I, and I appreciate that, it's very creative. But I think that is not the, the, the purpose, or, or, or the effect, the intent that we were going for, which would, we would all be able to be in the same room. I, I still feel like if commissioners are coming on site, but they're in separate rooms just to come out and shake a hand or say hello, it's kind of like defeating the, it just doesn't make. It's just not ideal, that's what I want to say. It's just not ideal, because to me, that's no different than me sitting in my house. And having, you know, this meeting, so. I, I'm not for that, but, but I like the creative thinking, I, I really do, but I don't see that, how that would meet the need of, of, of what we're trying to do, or what I've suggested anyway.
Unfortunately, like, the solution that is best is the hundred thousand dollar solution, and I think, eh, you know. As much as every, every single resident's opinion and, and comments are important and valuable. Doesn't make sense for us to spend a hundred thousand dollars on that software, right? When we can get those residents in the building and get their opinion, if they're, if they're struggling with the technology, we can still get them in the building. Get them to the microphone, so they can share their comments and opinions, and I will be on site and a staff member will be on site. So, so that they're still, they still have that thing that they're trying to get, but we don't have to spend a hundred thousand dollars of town money to do so. So.
I, I was just gonna ask, is there a way kind of in the interim, because I'm not in favor of spending? Or showing out that type of expense for, for this type of effort right now, but it's, maybe this has already been thought through. But is there a way that we could have some type of wireless microphone that could be passed amongst the people who are in the room, whether it's, you know, one or two commissioners are there? I mean, we, I, I. We've done, depending on the meeting, a decent enough job of not talking over one another during our discussions. But if there, for the people inside the room, whether it be commissioners and public, just being able to pass a mic until we get to a point where we can have more a better solution, have we looked into just a wireless microphone or two at all that can plug into the system?
Yeah, we're with our IT firm. The big thing is, uh, once we kind of get into the groove of things, there's definitely gonna be some things we can add to improve. So I think we're looking at a couple of different wireless mics. Will definitely help. It's a matter of making sure the other ones are muted when one's on, or just having one that gets passed around. But yeah, so it's maybe like, a couple of different cameras or some, like different camera angle, it's just stuff, we'll just. As we start getting back, as we start doing it in person, it'll just be small tweaks to make it better and better. As we go forward, a hundred thousand dollar investments, obviously perfect, we keep saying that, but it's, I think we could piecemeal, pretty well. To make do on our end.
My, my thought process is, just piggybacking off of what Colbert said. Having one or two mics, because having a bunch of mics in a room, you know, it causes the hearing, you can't hear, they start ringing, if it's too, if it's too close together, you need, you kind of need some distance. If you're gonna have a bunch of mics in the room, I don't care if it's, if a professional come and install them, this is the same thing is gonna happen. If you, if you're too close for comfort, the mics are gonna ring and. Use them. Yeah, the feedback, yes. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. Okay, um, so I'm just thinking, like, as long as there's always somebody in the room at town hall. And, you know, if we rotate or something like that. There's always somebody there that gives the, the resident of someone to be there with, in a microphone. And if everyone else is on Zoom. What are we hurting? Like, you know, we're not spending a hundred thousand. If it's not broken, why are we gonna fix it? I mean, if there's residents that need to go and be in front of the camera, or, you know, get on the microphone at town hall. Then we'll have somebody there. We've done it for the garden meetings, we've done it for, you know, other stuff, so that's just my idea. Thank you.
Yeah, what I'm gonna just kind of say with the, the, kind of to wrap this up, because with the equipment we have now, we have a solution that Kyle and John are tweaking. And let's test that out on the fourteenth and see how it goes. And well, at the same time, Kyle and John are probably gonna be pricing ways to help it, and we are next meeting hitting budget season. So, you know, maybe we start the budget with a hundred thousand dollars for blended meetings stuck in there, right? It, it, and it comes out later, but let's kind of. Let's see if we can get people into town hall sooner, if, if the, the real issue is a technological one. Then we're at least solving that problem, right? And then we'll, we'll kind of work towards solving the other problems and look at the financials of it as we go through budget season.
Thank you.
Fair to everyone?
Well, this commissioner, I have a comment. I, I do agree with Commissioner Hatchett on, on his suggestion. And then also, I would like to propose that we just think about, and not even think about, we need to propose like one day, if, if we're talking about meetings, when we have our sessions. That we go into town hall, and I can make that effort, to go into town hall on the days that we have our, like, when we're doing our work sessions. That is when it's most important for a resident, probably anyway, to be able to come and say, have something to say, or be heard if they want to have something to say. And come and do that. So once every other meeting, we're in town hall. And then the, the day, the meeting that we vote, which was like this one, on the third Tuesday, we're online. And everyone can still attend online like we're doing now. But one day, out of the month that we're doing our work, work session, we're in that work session, we're actually in the town hall, all of us. Having the meeting and like a regular meeting, and that's it. And then that will get past all of this, we need more, we need more audio, we need more. And then that will get past all of this. We need more, we need more audio. We need more, um, you know, uh, we need more audio, better technology. We go into the town hall, do our work session. We go the next meeting when we're doing our voting, which is like we're doing now, we can do that like we're doing now virtually.
So the only concern I have about that is, so we had kind of agreed on the opposite and that was because during work sessions, we don't generally take public comment, but during these voting sessions, we do. And if the challenge is that people are not being able to access it because of technology, then the the problem we need to solve is giving them those three minutes. So I think it it's.
So either that's still not, that's still not, because what I'm saying is either way, however, we give them the three minutes, it doesn't matter to me. Whether it's the three minutes in the work session or the three minutes when we're talk, when we're voting. Either way, the 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 um, the resident will have a chance. We're all at town hall, they have a chance to speak, whatever that three minutes is like our previous meetings were before COVID is what I'm saying. Because we cannot continue to do it just this way and make an excuse to not be back in meetings. So residents can just come. We don't have to worry about all the audio, all the technology, do a regular meeting. And that wherever those three minutes happen for our residents to be able to have a say. That is where we need to have that meeting. The next meeting is uh, like we're doing now, virtual. That's it. I mean, that solves a big problem. So I I mean, if I can get from DC to get to a meeting at seven o'clock and I'm willing to do that and do whatever it takes, I I'm sure we can open town hall back up for these in-person meetings once a month. Now, whether Tommy can attend or not is another thing.
Well, I think, yeah, one kind of like representation matters. Like we have, have someone who has, you know, that challenge with hearing things. And so we we should kind of respect that.
I I, wait, 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 hold on there. One second, one second, because you're saying, I didn't say we shouldn't respect that.
Oh, no, I wasn't saying that.
Working best for him. Okay, but I just, I I know the way you phrase things and I just want to make sure you understand what I'm saying.
I wasn't saying anything. Um, so the, the thing is, um, are having our public meeting, having our work session in person, right? The residents don't get, they don't get three minutes during our work session. That was a request kind of made to me by the board was that the meetings were lasting too long. We needed to really focus. So I feel like we really have to work out like what, what do we actually want here in these meeting, our meeting procedures say, work session, public comment is at the discretion of the president, right? So what, what we're presenting, what what SaaS presented to us is a way for online residents and in-person residents to both give comment during a regular public meeting when we're gonna vote. And it's also a way for um, virtual residents and in-person residents to view and watch our work sessions. So it solves both problems. So let's give it a try on February fourteenth and then discuss it again.
I think we're gonna, I think that when you see this later on, folks are gonna pay for this at the polls. Because that is not right to keep residents out of town hall. We need to be back in town hall to at least have one meeting. It doesn't, I'm not saying that we have to be there each, like both meetings, but at least one of those Tuesdays. It needs to go back to the way it was. So.
Nobody's keeping them out.
It is, it, we need to be able to go back to the way it was for people to be able to come and have that meeting without having all of these issues, talking about the audio and whatever else is going on. It happened before, so I don't know why. It it seems as though you're saying we can't change our minds because we were going in one direction and now just because this has been brought up to say that we need to get back in town hall and at least have one meeting in town hall where kept, where where the residents can attend in person. Now it's, it's to me as though you're saying, well, we were going in this direction, so we can't, we we can't, we can't vacillate and go back. We, we're not really going back. We're actually going to the way it was and the way meetings were before COVID, which is what everybody is doing and getting back to regular business.
So we, we are conducting regular, we're conducting regular business. We are finding a way for our residents to be at our meetings.
I didn't say we weren't conducting regular business. I just said, this is the way it was. So I don't understand why we as commissioners feel like we have the right to just hide behind a camera. When we have a town hall that we can go to and have the residents have the opportunity to come if they so choose. It doesn't matter if one person shows up. So why are we staying away from that? When that just really res- resolve the issue, it just really resolves the issue. We're doing this now, we can do one meeting the way we're doing it now. The other meeting needs to be at town hall. So I don't think that a resident is going to understand us saying, oh, we we we're trying to figure out a way that's gonna be best so we can have a blended meeting for you all. That's a compromise in itself in what I'm suggesting. And we don't need to have this hundred thousand dollar in this teeny little room uh, type of equipment.
So, um, it it sounds like what you're saying is that we should have one meeting that people can attend in person and one meeting that for virtual people. Like so, but I don't think that gives everyone full access to our.
That's not what I'm saying. You're misrepresenting what I'm saying. I'm not saying one meeting for people in person and one meeting for people that's virtual. That's not what I said. I said a regular meeting like we've always had prior to COVID. That is everyone, anyone that wants to attend the meeting, any resident can show up at town hall, take a seat. And we continue on, man, you've attended those meetings. So I don't know why you're acting like this is something that's just new and popped out of the sky. I've attended those meetings, those meetings, the commissioners are there, you walk in, you sit down, have a seat. If there's question and answer time or the question, public questioning, you stand up behind the podium, you take your three, you sit down.
I regularly attended those meetings.
So I I attended some of those meetings too. So I'm saying between that, I I don't understand why you're saying. I'm just saying it point blank and clear. There's no, I'm asking.
I hear what you're saying. You want us to, all of us to be in a room where people can stand up and give their public comment in person. I am saying I would like also for the residents who wish to to attend online to be able to participate in that meeting. So that's all.
But you can't, but you can't, but 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 you can't afford it. So we don't have a hundred thousand dollars to do that. So the whole point is if we don't, why can't we do what we've always done? And the people that did not show up to those meetings, they chose not to show up to those meetings and they can always go back and review the minutes. So that's business, that's doing business. It's not saying, well, if you can't come and we want you to attend, you want to attend virtually, then hey, read the minutes. That's why they're posting. But we were at town hall in case you wanted to see us. That's what I'm saying. And you can still have this virtual meeting that you're, that we're having now, once a month. Not for every meeting.
So is it the feeling overall of the commissioners that we would like to be in person fully once a month? All five of us in town hall?
Um, not all five, but I think the way we've been doing it, if some commissioner or like, let's say a couple of commissioners at town hall, we're still gonna livestream, there's still gonna be residents that want to do online. So why not keep it the way we're going and then have somebody at town hall that there for the residents that are there. We're not gonna change streaming online. Why would we change that? That's working out. There's residents that are always gonna want to watch live that aren't gonna come to town hall. Why would we change that? I think that's the way society is going. And yes, I'm not saying that there's residents that aren't gonna want to come to town hall. They will. We will have somebody there for them. It just won't always be all of us. That's my only thing. That's all.
I'm gonna get the other two commissioners thoughts.
I want to say, this is Commissioner Lot. I want to say that, okay, being new to the board, this is my first time serving. Um, I would like to see us back at town hall. Um, I don't have the experience of being there to actually shake a resident's hand to actually, you know, give them my time, you know, instead of just, you know, we we can do that if we knock on doors. But if a resident comes to town hall, it's a more, it's more personable. You know, you can sit there, you can talk to them. Uh, uh, you, a lot of times you have a meeting after the meeting. You know, if someone just wants to talk, I think we need to make ourselves available as um, elected officials so that that can possibly happen, you know? Um, and I want to say what Tom was saying, what Commissioner Hatchet is saying. Um, I think it's okay for some people to be at home because like somebody like him, um, so someone in his situation, um, the acoustics works better for him at home. So I understand why he wouldn't be actually on site. But I think the rest of us can kind of work that out where we're there. I I don't see no harm in having an old fashioned meeting.
Right, but it still would need to be blended is what you're saying. So that, you're saying.
Yeah, cause Tommy would need to be able to, we need to make things easier for Commissioner Hatchet. And for those people who can't, who have challenges that can't come out, but I don't think we should stop. I still think that, I don't think we should stop the efforts to getting back to town. And we can't afford to um, pay for all this equipment. I think we still should go in in-house. And whatever technology you wanna do, you you can do to help others, to reach others. And I think we should still do that as well. But I still think that we should be at town hall with a good old fashioned meeting. And whatever other things that you can tweak to make it better, then go for it.
Um, okay, so I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Colbert, but I do just want to point out that one of the reasons that we established the community conversations was to give people that opportunity. Um, so and we'll continue to have those once it warms up again. But Commissioner Colbert, go ahead.
I'm, I'm perfectly in agreement that, you know, we need to provide opportunities for uh, residents to interact with us and we, we should be able to have these uh, or have some meetings in person uh, for those who can't attend, both, you know, as commissioners and as residents. I think, um, I am very much in favor of of working or figuring out the blended meeting uh, methodology because of the fact that, yes, we had meetings that, you know, were completely in person before, before COVID and everything. But uh, not saying that we're not trying to go back to the way things were, but we need to be able to also make sure that we're not doing something that's excluding any population for people who want to come in person, for people who want to be virtual. You know, we need to make sure that we're making provisions for both of those to be participative in their government. And just like people who didn't come to meetings, weren't able to, or you know, were able to go back and just review the minutes. Some people who don't want to be virtual or participate live are also able to review the video after the fact. So we need to make sure that we're not taking away access from anyone uh, and in any event, but I am on board with coming in when needed, whenever we're having these meetings and 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 being available, which is why I suggested uh, or brought up, let's figure out an interim solution so that we can come back into the town hall and figure this out along the way. It may not be a per- perfect solution out of the gate at the next meeting, but at least starting to to build back towards that.
Okay, so I think we're gonna kind of move forward at least for the fourteenth with this idea of Kyle's and John with their tweaks. Um, and then w- once, once we see how that is, then the next step, and and maybe this is part of the step, is how to get all five of us in the same room, if that's even possible, which it may be. Um, but let's.
Well, 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 I wanna, I I have a question. Why would you think that it's not possible to have all five of us in a meeting? Because the, what I just heard being said was there needs to be an interim solution. If not, I wasn't correct, that he's all for, even Colbert mentioned uh, temporary solution interim. So, um, and and I don't know how we would even feel that we're alienating any particular group. When that is not even the issue, because everyone has access. If you want access, you have access. And if you want to attend these meetings, you attend the meetings. And you have, and that is not alienating simply because you say, and it's not an old fashioned meeting. I have meetings every day, multiple meetings. And I tell you, ninety-nine percent of the people that I deal with want to meet me in person. They do not want to have a Zoom meeting unless it's just they can't make it and they're across the country or out of the country. So I don't know why we think that sitting behind this camera is going to help our constituents, how our residents feel like they're better connected to us because it does not. It's no, it, there's no alternative to meeting and speaking with some one in person and being able to share your feelings and you being able to read their emotions and you being able to talk to them and have that conversation. We're talking about two different things. So I don't know why there is some notion that if we're all in the same town hall in a in-person live meeting, that somehow we're alienating people or we're not reaching certain people groups when they have access. Not, I don't know anyone that doesn't have a phone. I don't know anyone that's not looking at a phone. I don't know anyone that can't access these minutes online if they want to. So we're never alienating anyone because it's already set up to actually interact with individuals. What I'm saying is one meeting in town hall, live, in person, people can come. And if they choose not to, then they can check the minutes out. That's why we have a website. So I don't know why we're trying to get out of saying, or or trying to add something to make it appear as though we're alienating people because we are not having a blended meeting. Blended meetings are not the end all be all, okay? And when you all want, and when you all want to run, you're gonna get yourselves out there and hit the pavement. That's what you're gonna do because you're gonna value that in-person connection then. But right now, you want to sit behind the cam. So that's what I'm saying. Let it all be well known, you want to sit behind the camera now, come time to vote, you will be hitting that pavement and have no problem going out saying, oh, I want to meet you in person. So why not do that now? Let's just be honest. You will do it. Everybody here will do that. So let's just be real.
I just, I need to just to say, I am out in the street getting people's water fixed, helping them with their things. I need people, I stop. I need people every.
Don't tell me to stop. Don't do that.
You, you have said, I don't care about the people. I'm sorry, but I take that very personally.
Nobody said that you, uh, excuse me, do not lie, President Franklin on me. Because I never said you didn't care about the people. Do not lie. It's what you want to do. You want to, it's what you want to do. You are good with putting words in people's mouth. You will not, you will not do that to me.
I'm sorry, John, but I have to ask you.
You won't do that to me. You won't do that.
This is uh, has gone off topic and is unprofessional. I am calling us back to order. Uh, we are going to move on to public comment. We will do the preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda, which I actually have typed into a Word document, which hopefully I can share so we can work through. Um, I have two public comments. We'll start with Joe Herco.
Uh, Joe Herclay, Old Marlboro Pike, um, thank you, Commissioner Duckett for, you know, bringing up this issue. Um, I had offered in a previous meeting to try to help you with this. I did do a blended meeting for the Friends of the Library last year and I have a speakerphone that I know cost me less than a hundred thousand dollars. I think it was around one fifty that is supposed to handle. I think it's six to eight people and it does balancing. So that way if one person's really close. so that we have one person's really close to the microphone and someone else is further away, it tries to fix their voices and get them to an equal level. Um, I can let you borrow it and try it out and see if it'll work for you guys, or, um, I think the company also makes a slightly higher-end model. Um, so just let me know.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we will move on to Monica Williams.
Good afternoon, um, happy new year, everyone. Um, so just to start off, I did not like the way this whole conversation just went. I felt like it was unprofessional, we're talking about elections, we're making personal attacks, making personal attacks. I felt like I don't understand why you guys could not communicate with each other and just simply, uh, come up with an option for either blended, uh, uh, a blended meeting. I mean, it, it was such a, 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 my new topic that turned into a personal attack on each other.
You always got something to say.
I'm sorry, please do not interrupt.
When it's not necessary.
Please do not interrupt.
Don't tell me what to do, Sarah, that's.
Wait, okay, so, so, whoa, okay, John, can you cut everyone's mic again?
Wow.
Yeah, wow, Monica, wow.
No, I'm sorry, I have to ask the commissioners to maintain, commissioners may not attack residents.
Okay.
And she may not attack commissioners with her comment.
Uh, did I say your name? I did not.
You didn't say, you didn't say anybody's name, but we know what you're referring to, Monica.
Both of.
Wow, wow, okay, anyway.
Wow.
John, cut the mic, you need to cut, sorry.
You know Monica as the Board HOA, but then there's Monica that's not Chuck, okay? Let's put that out.
Monica, you know what? What, what are you saying, really? Really, are you threatening me?
All right, John, can you close the meeting?
Yeah. I will see you, honey.
Hold on, John.
Close the meeting.
Hold on, leave it open for a second.
Okay.
Cause everyone's kind of calmed down a little bit, but listen, this is, we're gonna recess. We're gonna have a, a two-minute recess, we're gonna come back and we're gonna hear the residents' comment and we're gonna do our work. It is not appropriate for commissioners to respond or anything when a public comment is being given. We listen to the public comment. I have been attacked on public comments before, I listen to the public comment. If I have something calm to say in response to it, I will say it afterwards and you can all have a chance to say something. However, it is unprofessional to behave the way we're behaving right now. So we will come back in two minutes.
Crazy chick, crazy. Crazy chick. Karen, we're all.
Please, please mute your mic, Commissioner Duckett. If everyone is in and able to hear, um, please turn on your mics and, or sorry, turn on your videos. Um, everyone's mic is still muted. I'm just gonna lay some ground well, rules now that we have a quorum. The resident has three minutes to speak. The resident must be respectful to the board. Now, those are the ground rules, the, the board is asked, and, and we've talked about this and we'll talk about this in closed session, to not comment, just listen to what the resident has to say. If you feel you have something to say afterwards, you can do so, but it has to be respectful of the resident, so everyone's gonna be respectful of each other, right? So we're gonna give Monica her three minutes again, starting now, if you're still with us, Monica.
I am absolutely positively still here. Okay, so as I was saying, I'm disappointed in the interaction that I just saw between the board. I felt like everybody was taking everything personal. Pretty much everybody seemed to be on the same page, but because everyone was either talking over each other or I don't know if they have a, a specific agenda, I mean, we, I do agree, we should come, begin to come back in and also accommodate people who are unable to make it in physically. But again, none of that was able to get across to each other because of the way that the information was being delivered, okay? So everything is about delivery, you know, you could say something, if it comes out wrong, the other person's just not gonna hear you. And that's pretty much what I was seeing between the, uh, Board of Commissioners. Going back and forth, the talking over ea- each other, um, being disrespectful, unprofessional, I didn't like that. That's not what we voted, voted for at all. We voted for commissioners to come in, do what's best for the town, not the town, and move the town forward, but this is like looking just like boards that we had before, before Tonka, uh, was elected. This is basically reminding me of that basic, that kind of setup that we had. So this is like completely unacceptable. We cannot annex in other, you know, communities with the board behaving this way. We just can't. That's not how, that is, that's, you know, me, uh, again, I don't disrespect anybody unless they disrespect me. Okay, I'm a very approachable person, I don't think I've disrespected anybody on the board, period. You know, anybody can come and talk to me, but I, but at the same time, I'm also not gonna be mistreated by, um, of someone that I, people that I have elected. You know, I expect a little bit better. Again, I don't come at the board a certain way because I don't want them coming at me a certain way, you know, I'm respectful. But that's all I have to say, I just did not like the way that that final exchange went between the board. And for the record, yes, we should have, uh, begin to come into the, the, you know, physically in for meetings. Um, if we can also still have virtual, also for those who cannot make it in, um, that would be great also. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Um, we are now gonna move into the preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. John, is it possible for me to share my screen that will make it easier for us to split up these items? Oh, it is.
Let me go ahead and stop sharing, or you can share, yeah, let me stop sharing this.
I kind of just put it in a Word document.
It doesn't always work, hold on. Okay, should be, there you go, you should be sharing right now.
Okay. All right. All right, so we should be looking at a Word document on my computer. Um, so this is, we have two meetings in February, we are trying to keep the meeting on the fourteenth relatively short. Um, the items that are definitely on the fourteenth currently are the, um, Better City and the budget priorities. And on the twenty-first is anticipated revenue and town tax rates. I gotta change that font. So we need to decide which of these other items, like, so the, the first slate of items up here is this, this is our old business, okay? And this actually should go up to old business. Um, so we have a number of new businesses, I think this, if we want to reward, that's gonna have to go there, so, um, we have a number of new business pieces and it's a question of whether we can really tack on those new business pieces at that, at this time. Um, so we have budget priorities, we have Better City, those are over there, um. What else? Like, does anyone have any thoughts on how we should tackle splitting this up?
Can you make that a little bit larger, please?
See, tell me if we lose pieces of it when I make it bigger. And is it? Is it that the screen itself, like, are you seeing my desktop? Is that part of the problem?
That's okay, it works now. I just had to log out of one and back into and use another computer.
Okay, um. So I think it makes sense to keep the vision plan and Better City and Board Priority as all kind of working together. That, that all kind of mentally sticks together, in my opinion. Um, we're gonna be attempting a meeting blend on the fourteenth, um. Let's just talk about it anyway, cuz it seems like an issue we need to be communicating a little better on. Um, and that may wind up having to be on both meetings. Um, okay.
Um, is there a date up top, like, uh, above SCWG? What, what is that?
No, those, so the items are on the left and then the dates are on the right.
So you're trying to shift, um, the dates from the right to the left?
So I'm trying to shift the items from the left and stick them under the dates on the right with the, keeping in mind that the request is to keep the February fourteenth meeting short. Um, what I think might make, so the conference room agreement.
I think that should go fairly quick with the conference room agreement.
Yeah, it's a quicker thing.
And a question on the conference room agreement, will, um, Kyle be reaching out to our insurance company to find out if they offer like a supplemental insurance? And if not, do they have a suggestion about supplemental insurance?
So yeah, so Kyle will, will do the research from the discussion this evening, um, and then that will be on the fourteenth.
Then that should go fairly quickly.
Uh, so, okay, so, and as Kyle and Commissioner Colbert, just remind me, SCWG?
We're, we're, we basically, sorry. Uh, we basically have, I think there were just one or two tweaks that Kyle and I was, was looking at. I'm perfectly fine with that being on the twenty-first session. Uh, cuz I think our, our timeline was to try to introduce it at the Town Meeting on the twenty-eighth. Um, but there hasn't really been any changes, you know, from what we discussed last month, so I'm fine with just giving it a final sweep on the twenty-first if we're all good with it and then introducing it at the twenty.
And I currently don't have any news about the police office space. Now, I might get some, but I think maybe let's just put that on the twenty-first and if I wind up getting some news, I can just give you guys like a loose update on the fourteenth. Um, if that's okay. Um, elections. Um, are we feeling like, like, have we all, has everyone had a chance to sit down and really like get into the elections ordinance? Do we feel ready with any changes, um, or do you feel like you need more time?
And an update on that one, um, Town Attorney Best is also working on reading it over for, um, legal sufficiency. So hopefully within the coming weeks, he said he would have something for us to present as well.
So then if that's the case, I would suggest having that on the twenty-first as well, just so that we have, make sure that we're incorporating whatever Attorney Best has and giving us all enough time to, to come through. If, if no one else objects to it.
I agree, I agree.
Um, I think the Board Review of Performance Review Forms and Survey should be done on the fourteenth so that we can, cuz we're, you know, we're, we're planning to in scheduling, to schedule reviews in the next week or so here, so we can, whoa, I don't know what just happened to my columns. Um, but I think getting that done on the fourteenth will help us stay on target with the budget. Um, so so ethics is, and we'll kind of so that's kind of like putting some more into the ethics code, so let's put that on the twenty-first. Um, so then, kind of, it's, there's three things that Commissioner Lot has brought up, brought up today. One is, um, the construction permitting and whether fees go with that. Uh, that kind of ties into the property standards, that's why I have that on there. Um, I feel like with everything else we have right now, we're not ready to tackle these. Um, but I don't want to dismiss the concerns of a commissioner that we should tackle them, so what are thoughts? Do we want to, you know, lengthen these meetings and add them in, or do we want to see like, see if, if we can get this stuff done in February so that we can add them into our March?
Put it on the twenty-first for now.
I'm fine with it being, uh, moved to a later time.
Kind of put it in for March, I'll have John put it on the rolling agenda.
Uh, we're talking about the permitting fees, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna put those March. Um, and then there's the closed session, so, um, Commissioner Lot requested a closed session, um, and the way that works is that if the commissioners want to initiate a closed session, it has to be a board vote to um, have a closed session. The topics, um, in the proposed closed session, John, do you have them in front of you? I might crash my computer if I pull them up. And I think you have too.
Yes, they were, um, procedures for notifying elected officials about town issues was the first one. And the second one was related to employees and their roles. Town, town employees and the roles.
So, um, the first item is part of the discussion this evening, um, and then the second item is sort of a personnel uh, item that we do have a personnel, a closed session for personnel in March. that we do have a personnel, a closed session for personnel in March. So it is up to the four of you. And I will, you know, whether you want to have a closed session added to the fourteenth or if it wants to be proposed to be added to the twenty-first, however you guys want to do that. Um, but I will
Um, I, I thought that we said that we could, um, add it to tonight's closed session, like one of the topics.
Yes, one, one of the topics should be covered through tonight's closed session because we're talking about procedures.
Right, and the other one can be put on um, when we have another closed session. We don't have to have a special one. If we can just add it to it, then I'm fine.
So you're okay with that.
Have some questions.
Okay, that's
That I would like to discuss with the team.
Okay. Um, so we'll, if that other topic comes up and I have to cut people off, we can, like, I, I can add a closed session if I have to. Um, so we'll figure that out, but I won't do it on the fourteenth. Fair?
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
All right, so I think we've got this. John, I'm actually just gonna send this document over to you.
That's perfect. And I'll use it to build it for tomorrow.
Um,
Um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Duckett brought up, uh, the road construction. I just wanted to bring that
Oh, you're right. Um,
I don't want to
You're right, we have an update. Uh, I mean, yeah, it's in the packets. Let's, actually, you know what I, what I had done in my type, my handwritten version is board pri, so one of the board priorities was the roads. So maybe we can just have that update covered in board priorities rather than making it a whole separate item. Does that address your concern, Commissioner Duckett?
Um, you know, let me see in board priorities. Um, if we can get an update at that time.
Yeah, I mean, there's an update too in your packet. Um, but yes, we can do like a more official update.
Yeah, unofficial update, because I, I would prefer to, well, as long as we, um,
That's fine. We're gonna have to talk about it.
Question about it, yeah.
Yeah, so our, one of our priorities last year was to get roads repaid. It is, the, the contracts going back and forth are incredibly slow and it is frustrating. So we should be talking about it. That's fine. All right, um, I lost the top one. I think that's everything. Um, so I'm gonna need to read us into the closed session. So is there a motion to go into closed session under General Provisions, Article three dash three oh five B two, to protect the privacy or reputation of individuals concerning a matter not related to public business and fourteen, before a contract is awarded or bids are open, to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal. If public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in a competitive bidding or proposal process, the Board of Commissioners proposed to go into closed session on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, following the January regular town meeting to discuss meeting procedures, protocols, and a discussion of healthcare brokers. Is, so is there a motion? So I need to, so is there a second?
Second.
Um, John, can you call us a vote?
I'll do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Henshaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot. Mr. Lot.
Commissioner Lot.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Lot, how do you vote?
She, her microphone's off.
Sorry, yes, must, something happened with my screen. I don't know what happened. I'm sorry.
Okay. Harry, thank you. You're in closed session.
Okay, so we'll all come off this link and we'll move into the closed session. Good night, folks.